Week on a closed session item. Seeing none, we will now go to closed session. Now we exit out and then click on the next meeting. Quarter, the 1,445th Board of Directors Meeting on May 18th, 2020. Welcome to everyone, and I hope you'll notice that we have new technology with our teams, and we can see each other now instead of only the last four people who spoke. So it's really great to be able to see all of you at once. So thank you for joining us tonight. And now we will go through, I guess we can do roll call even though we can see each other. I don't know if, oh, we lost another board member again. We lost Adolfo. See if he can come on. There he is. Okay, so let's go ahead and shall we do roll call? I'll call out trustee Brown.
I am here.
Trustee Irvin.
Present.
All right, awesome, trustee Lopez.
Present.
Trustee Newman.
Present.
All right, trustee Walker.
Here.
Vice President West.
Present.
All right, and do we have student, our student rep, Arnov? Are you on, Arnov?
Hello, yes, I'm here.
Yay, I could barely hear you, but great, glad to have you here. And then I'm here, Cindy Marks. So now I want to say that we have translator services, and I'd like to refer anybody who needs translator services to Ms. Paula Valbuena, who is on this virtual conference. Ms. Valbuena, please go ahead.
Thank you, President Marks. Buenas tardes, habla Paula Valbuena. 1805-324-7680, e ingresa el código de acceso 442410737, seguido de la tecla numeral. Este es un número totalmente gratis. Una vez más, puede llamar al 1805-324-7680, ingresando el código 442410737, seguido de la tecla numeral. Igualmente, puede acceder por medio de nuestra página web, mcs4kaidee.
Normally in the boardroom, we would rise for a moment of silence, and so we'll just have a moment of silence for right now. We'll have a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. And now I will read into the record. I don't know, somehow we missed the Pledge of Allegiance. Did we miss that? Do we do it now?
Next page.
It's now, okay, it just wasn't here, okay. And so now we will, I will rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm hoping you can hear me. Thank you. And now I will read into this record. Good evening, everyone. This open session meeting of the Board of Trustees is being livestreamed at the direction of the board. The livestream is available on the district's website, and the recordings will be available for viewing the day after the board meeting. Modesto City School Board meetings are closed to the public to follow state guidelines on social distancing until further notice. This action was taken in response to the Governor's Executive Order N2520 and Resolution 19/20-17 delegating authority to take necessary action to protect students and staff from the spread of...
In person and hope that this will be over soon. I first want to give a couple shout outs to students and to staff. I recognize we're coming to the end of the year. Hang on, I need to admit Arnov, who got kicked out. There we go. Just a big shout out to the students and staff. You've really had to make a lot of adjustments. I know it's been difficult, I know it's been hard, it's exhausting work, but you really have risen to the challenge, so thank you for that. I'm confident that as we move forward, it will become easier, and we are going to get all the better strategies out there. I also want to give a really big shout out to the students who are graduating next week. How exciting, this is what, this is what we work for, right? It's this week and, or this next week, and it's, it's difficult that we're not all together, but you know that you're in our hearts, really a heartfelt thank you for all that you've done and all that you've given up this year. You are now moving on to another chapter in your life, and you, you are going to be wonderful. You're right, you guys are going to be amazing. So I just wanted to make sure that we gave you a little bit of time. I want to take a moment and give the community and the board an update on some of the work that we've been doing. I know that you're going to have a board presentation later today about work for the summer, summer work, summer school, all of that. I'm not speaking to that, what I'd like to speak tonight is about really opening schools. Modesto City School will open August 10th of next year, and we've been doing some planning around that because we recognize that things are shifting and things are changing. Because we don't know what the future holds, we have to plan for a lot. So not just opening up traditional, but opening up in other fashion, and I'll talk a little bit about that. How we go about opening schools is really up to the governor and up to the county and up to the county health. I mean, at the, at the end of the day, our number one priority has to be on the health of our community. So we will wait ideas written down, so we can now present that to some stakeholders and get some feedback and input. So what we've been working on up to this point is really four options for August. The traditional option where we walk, we go to school, brick and mortar, and everything is the way that we're used to. We're also looking at a hybrid open, where you go to school in a brick and mortar and do distance learning at the same time. We're also looking at our distance learning. That's what we're currently in right now. We've learned a lot about what not to do and about what to do, and, and so we're working to, to gain that information. And then lastly, we recognize there's going to be a lot of parents that want independent study. They want a self-paced program that if they don't want to come to school, they don't have to. It's really that independent study. We currently have that with MBA, but we're looking at expanding, expanding that piece. So now that we have some ideas out on paper, it's now time to get some input from different stakeholders. So beginning this week, we are starting some of our virtual meetings with key stakeholders. We are also finalizing and translating surveys that will go out to students, to staff, to community, to do, to get input from them. What worked, what didn't work, what would you like to see? What sort of model would work best for your family, given the conditions that we have? So we'll gather all that information, and then we will put that information into what we currently have drafted. Again, very drafty until we get more data and more input. We'll then add, modify, and adjust. My hope is that we can come back to this board and to the community June 8th. That's my best hope. I'm not sure that that's going to materialize. If not June 8th, then it'll be June 22nd to showcase for you, all right, what does that really look like? There's a lot of work that goes into changing school, transportation, nutrition services, custodial, supervision, all of that. We're in the works in looking through that. So I look forward to, one, getting your input from the survey and feedback, and then secondly, I'm looking forward to coming back June 8th, not myself, but the team, because they are much smarter than I am in these models, or June 22nd. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to you, President Marks. You're muted.
Can't hear you.
There you go. Nope, nope. You're muted, Cindy.
Okay, it came off and then it went back on again. All right, thank you for letting me know. So I forgot to do the closed session. So I just wanted to report out that we did not have any action, that we gave direction to staff, and we did not have any action to report out, other than the direction that we gave to our legal staff. So, all right, now we will go on to our Board of Education members' reports. So I have trustee Lopez, you're going to be first on this one. And are you still there? There you are, okay, great. Trustee Lopez, do you have any report or? Yeah, we had it as reports.
Yeah, well, I don't have reports as such for many meetings. I do want to tell folks that we are still working on the Say Russell School Project with Chackelford and Marshall. California Walks is taking on that role. They have been meeting through Zoom as well. And that's, on the meetings, that's pretty much it. I just want to reiterate what I keep, what I keep reminding folks every time we're on, on a school board meeting, is I know that, that we are getting, we're getting antsy to be out and about, we still gotta...
But I would also echo the point about graduations, because I think is, again, I've got a family member graduating this year, and this is very different. And you did a fantastic job. I think it's great when you go out. If you look in people's yards, they do have yard signs now announcing they have a graduate, which I think is a good thing, because at least you can sort of mentally go, I could have given you a diploma. And then at least they're happy and they're celebrating and they're lifting up their students. And I think that's super important, because it's a lot of work to get through all 12, 13 years of school and sort of let it roll by like this. And my hope is we get back soon and be safe, and that's it.
Thank you, trustee Walker. Trustee Irvin.
Yes, no formal report out there, but again, like, as a trustees, my colleagues like to thank the, and congratulate our graduates, our seniors, and our transitioning eighth graders to high school, and looking forward to one day, maybe getting to see them graduate. Also, I'd like to thank our, our great staff that we have, from, you know, our teachers, our administrators, our executive team. As I'm out there and I hear parents and people in the community really comment on how their child is being engaged through the process, you know, we had to rush to put into place, and the kinks have been smoothed out, you know, so to speak, or still smoothing out, so to speak. I've had, I've heard some other stories from some neighboring districts where they're not as fortunate as we are in terms of being ahead of the curve and addressing any technical issues and getting students engaged. So it's, it's good when we can, we can comment and, and be able to, you know, feel, feel the appreciation that we have in here in our district for our staff elevating to the next level on such a short notice. So I just really want to commend them for doing that. And a special shout out to our nutrition staff, you know, you see them out there, you know, giving those, those meals out there. Those are essential workers making it happen for, for our families out there in the community. So it's, it's really good to see that and to hear the comments in the community about how well we're, we're doing and progressing during this time.
Thank you, thank you, trustee Irvin. Trustee Brown.
Off mute. So once again, the Tournament of Talent was amazing. I did miss all of the shuffle and the excitement of moving people on and off the stage and just the live event, but to be able to bring that about and let all of our talent be showcased was really exceptional. I appreciate, appreciate that and look forward to the live experience next year. So I have to, have to say, as many of you have mentioned, the graduations, to share with the public that to stare in the face of, of a panel of lights instead of looking out at an audience was really disappointing. The personal experience with each student walking the stage, shaking sweaty palms and handing out diplomas, I'll miss that experience. But kudos to all of the, the students and the staff that come to celebrate those graduations, and so grateful that we're able to do a virtual experience for the students, and hopeful that we can find some way to bring some of that personal touch to each of them if the opportunity arises. So good luck to everyone, not only through the summer, but as our graduates move on to bigger and better things and stay focused on positives and opportunities. It's too easy to get caught up in negatives. Don't go there. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Brown. Yes, I have to say graduations are the highlight of the year, and I always look forward to them. So I know we're all going to really miss meeting you students on the stages and seeing the parents and cheering and hearing the speeches. It's just a unique experience. But I have to say, I got to see some of the students' submissions, and I know you're going to have your personality in those submissions to the graduations. So I look forward to seeing all of those and how they turned out. So I'm thankful that we can at least do that this year, and, and very disappointed that it couldn't be in person. So it'll be a memorable year, though, we'll have to say that for everyone. And then also, I had a few meetings that I did attend. I have more meetings now than I had before, I guess because we can do it remotely, so I don't have to drive to Sacramento. But we had our delegate assembly meeting yesterday, or not yesterday, but Saturday. So it was a three hour, three and a half hour meeting, which was really convenient to be able to stay and watch the webinar and hear the reports. So that was extremely helpful. We only had a few things on our agenda and completed that in a fairly timely manner. And then I also got to meet another, we did another school board meeting where we share some of our ideas and what's happening in six counties of board members and some of the graduation ideas and how they're handling some of their issues with feeding students and going from one thing to the next. And then I also was able to meet with Congressman Harder. Our Pacer from CSBA has set up meetings for some of us. So I asked Dr. Naguchi if there was some important information that we needed to share with our congressman, which was very helpful. So we shared about our nutrition and concerns that we have about the number of students that we're feeding and ensuring that we are reimbursed for all of that, and then also the ones that, where we're helping out some of the families in our neighborhoods that are still struggling. And then also some of our special ed needs that we are going through right now, and how we can, they can help us from the federal government, and then just being flexible with how we're meeting the needs of our special ed students. So those were some of the items that I got to share in the meetings that I went to. So thank you for sharing. I always appreciate hearing what you've been doing and some of the comments from the public out there. And now we will move on to item eight, seven, recognitions. And I believe this, I'm turning it over to Krista Newman for our recognition of 2020 Classified School Employee Week. Krista.
Thank you, President Marks, and thank you, trustees. Hopefully you can hear me okay. I just, first off, I wanted to say thank you to the district and to the board for all that you've done over this past year to support recognition and to allow us to share this time in every meeting. I think that the employees, I know that they love it. I know the community loves it, and I just, I really want to applaud everyone for allowing us to do this. So tonight, what I'm going to show is a video that recognizes our classified school employees. This week is Classified School Employee Week. And as you remember, in the last board meeting, I showed an appreciation video for our teachers, and now it's time to do the same for our classified employees. And I really want to give hats off to all of our employees, because when you think about, and the public actually, all of our parents, the students, our teachers, classified employees, no matter who you are, this situation with COVID over the past three months has really put forth a lot of hard to swallow changes that have impacted many of us in every single facet of our lives. And so I want to applaud everyone's flexibility and the adaptability that they've gone through to master these challenges and really to further move Modesto City Schools to being a destination district. So, so thank you, applaud. So let's go ahead and show the video. It's a little over three minutes long, and then I'll come back with the, oh, and I forgot to mention, I'm sorry. There's also a proclamation that's part of the consent agenda tonight, and I appreciate that the board allows us to keep those on the agenda. I think that that's a, a great way to show appreciation to the staff as well. So if my IT colleagues could go ahead and, and roll that footage, that would be great. Great, thank you so much for that. I hope you enjoyed the video.
Yes, that was a great collage of students.
I see thumbs up, thumbs up.
Thumbs up.
Nicely done, Ms. Newman.
Thank you, Mr. Herbst.
Yes, that was great, thank you. All right, so now we have the recognition of the 2020 Modesto City Schools Tournament of Talent winners.
Yes.
Newman.
This is so exciting. So I, if the IT tech could go ahead while I'm, while I'm stalling, get the PowerPoint ready, that would be great. This year, as you mentioned earlier, we had our Tournament of Talent entirely online. And I do want to applaud Arnov, as well as the Interhigh Council, but as well as all the different schools who participated. We had 14 acts that came in with, with, some schools had had talent shows before the COVID shutdown, and then others had to just submit videos. But what we tried to do is have everyone submit a video so that it was, it was equal footing. So what we did then is we pieced together everything into the final production, and if the IT techs could go ahead and share the PowerPoint, that would be great. Hopefully they have the PowerPoint. If not, I can always share it.
Working on it right now.
Okay.
Yes. They said it'd be great if you could share it, Krista.
If I could share it, okay. All right, we're going to be, let's test my sharing abilities. Hang on, let me. Ooh. All right, oops, hang on a second. There we go. Okay, you should be able to see that now, and then let me get it to, oh, oh. No, no, don't look, don't look right now. There we go, okay. Sorry about that. All right, let's, here we go. So can you see that okay? Okay.
Yes, we can, yes.
Okay, great. So like I said, it was our ninth annual Tournament of Talent, and I definitely applaud all of the students who participated. Like I said, we had 14 different talented acts, and the video itself that we posted on YouTube had about a little over 2,000 views, which is, which is phenomenal. And then we also had an audience, School Spirit Award, that we wanted to encourage audience, the audience to vote for, and we had a little over 1,000 votes for that winner. So I do want to thank and give appreciation to our judges, one of which was Dr. Naguchi, and then President Marks as well, and then Sarah Hosner, who's the leader of the Valley Talent Project. She was great as well. And I do want to give kudos to Danielle Hinkle in Student Support Services. Becky Fortuna did not put her name on this slide, but she definitely deserves kudos as well in Communications, we couldn't have done it without her. And then Fouk Fom Gallart and Nicole Burrows, they're both assistant principals. One is from Johansson, one is from Downey. And then Brad Cornwell from Johansson, he was the mastermind who stitched the video together and just did a wonderful job producing it. And Liam Woolerup was our fabulous emcee from Modesto High. So third place, we have Skylar Burton from Elliott, and Skylar will win a $50 Visa gift card. So congratulations, Skylar. Second place, we have Colby De Guzman from Downey, and Colby will receive a $75 Visa gift card. And I got to tell you, that kid has moves, his yo-yo. Like, I've never seen a yo-yo do the things that he does with that yo-yo. And first place was Jack Lickie from Byer, fabulously talented violinist. I mean, he was just amazing. So he will win a $150 Visa gift card. And our audience vote goes to Darius Deguna from Gregori, and Darius will receive a $50 Visa gift card, and Gregori will receive $500 towards School Spirit and student engagement items that the campus itself can, can procure. But I do want to thank the cabinet members, my fellow cabinet members, for the student prizes, all the gift cards, because given the COVID situation, obviously there wasn't the ability to go out and solicit donations from various businesses. And I made a personal appeal to the cabinet members if they would be kind enough to, to split the, the total cost and then personally pay for it, because there are restrictions that we have to work within for government funds. And so we all personally pitched in, and I really do want to thank them for their kindness in doing that, because I know that it's because they believe in this event, and they believe in the students, which is just beautiful. So thank you to my fellow cabinet members for doing that. So congratulations to all the winners and all the students who participated. I think that there are a lot of unique things that are happening this year, and this is another one, but you know, we've overcome that challenge, and we've done a great job producing it, and it'll definitely be a year to remember with this particular Tournament of Talent. So we look forward to the 2021 event, and like trustee Brown said, having it in person, that's our goal. So thank you so much, congratulations, everyone. And the video is still posted on our Facebook page with the YouTube link. If you... And the video is still posted on our Facebook page with the YouTube link, if you'd like to go watch it. So thank you.
Thank you. That was great. We so appreciate you putting that together and for the board members to see it. If you haven't had a chance to watch it, it is really great, just to see it. And it took 28 minutes to watch 14 performances. So that was amazing. But just seeing our students and the talent that they have is incredible.
I agree. So thank you so much.
Yes, thank you. And now we will move on to Item A8, Approval of the Consent Agenda. And I have requests for three items to be removed, just to be removed, and one to be discussed. So I have a request for Item D2 and Item E1, 1 through 58. So Ms. Newman, and I can read the title of them, if you would like to tell... Just go ahead.
Yeah, these don't need to be moved to discussion items. I'd just like to just register a no vote on those two items. I think that there's submissions of timing on D2 concerning we have a new principal coming into Downey. And so I just have concerns on that. I want to allow as much flexibility as possible for our new principal. And then with regard to E1, some of those are new positions, and I am filling in new positions, and I would just caution doing that at this time. So I just wanted to vote no on those two things.
Okay, and so we will set those aside for right now, and when we vote, I will state them again. So it's D2... Well, I'll state them when it's time. And then I have a request for Item F2, which is what we just celebrated, the Approval of Proclamation Recognizing Classified School Employee Week as May 17 through 23, 2020 in Modesto City Schools. So do you still wish that to be on discussion? I believe Mr. Brown asked for that. So, okay.
Cindy, I would like to just request that we have a separate vote on that so that we, as a board, can acknowledge the classified staff.
Okay, we can do that. So...
Cindy, I'm not sure if you can see my hand up.
Oh, yes, Trustee West. I see you now.
I had just informed you a little bit earlier that I need to recuse myself from Item C10. Item C10, when it talks about the vendors, my husband works for one of the companies, so I just need to recuse myself from that vote. That's...
That's good. Okay, so let's do the vote on the vendors first, and then we'll remove each one as we go, and we'll vote on all of them. Wait a minute. We'll just remove, and we'll vote on all of the consent items except for... Okay, so we're gonna remove all of these from the consent item. Item B2, which is, let me read it here, Approval of Appointment of Representatives to CIF League. Then Item E1, is it 58? Did I get that correct? E15? Is it all of them?
It's E1, 1 through 58, numbers 1 through 58. So it's just the item numbers. So it's not all of E1.
Okay, so it's Item E1, because there's 58 items under E1.3. So is it just E1, 1 through 58?
Right.
Okay, E1, 1 through 58. And then the last one is Item F2, which I just read. So that was with the Approval of the Proclamation Recognizing Classified School Employee Week. So we'll remove all of those. And so do I have a motion to approve all of the other items on consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay, so it's been moved by...
By Trustee Newman.
And seconded by?
Seconded.
Trustee Walker. Okay. I don't know, but it looks like I can see everyone. Okay, and on the internet, I can see everyone. So we will vote, except for Mr. Irvin. Okay, now we can see Mr. Irvin. All right, so I'm gonna try it. Let's just try it and see if we can vote, and I'll raise our hand and say aye. So all those in favor, please raise your hand.
Aye.
Raise your hand, yes.
Aye.
Okay, so I see, and it looks like it passes unanimously. Are there any dissensions? Hearing none, the consent items pass unanimously. Okay, now we will move on to Item C10. And let's vote on that. We'll just vote on that right now, so we can have that one taken care of. So Item C10, I'm gonna read it. So Approval of Authorization to Renew Annual Contracts with Specific Suppliers for Specific Supplies, Commodities or Services for 2020 and 2021. So we will vote on that, and Trustee West is off of it. So do I have a motion to approve Item C10?
So moved.
Okay, I'll take Trustee Irvin for a motion, and seconded by Trustee Newman.
That was Trustee Brown.
Oh, Trustee Brown, okay.
I was trying to sound like...
I tried to catch who said it. So, okay, Trustee Brown has been made a motion by Trustee Brown, seconded by Trustee Newman. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. I forgot to ask, is there any discussion? But hearing none, we'll go ahead. Okay, so it passes unanimously, and Trustee West has recused herself from that item. And now, I forgot to ask, but I will ask, Superintendent, did we have any comments for consent items?
We did not.
Okay, that's great. So we will go ahead on to... Didn't put that in the note to do that. And then now, we will vote on... Let me get this page again. So now, we will vote on Items D2, and we'll put them together, E1, 1 through 58. Is that okay for you?
That works.
Okay, unless there's someone else who wants to say a comment on that. Okay, do we have a motion to approve Item D2 and E1, 1 through 58? I will make a motion to approve Item D2 and E1, 1 through 58. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, that was Trustee Irvin made the second. Is that correct? All right. So, and there's no discussion? Is there any discussion? Because we're voting on these right now, or there could be discussion. Is there any discussion by anyone? Trustee Walker?
I'll admit that I'll be joining Trustee Newman.
Okay, so you're voting no on both those items?
Aye.
Okay. All right, because I could have separated them, but I did not know.
I'm good.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, so we will vote on these, and I will ask for... All those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye, so I can see you. All those in favor of approving these, aye?
Aye.
I have... Okay, so I'm gonna say who I see. Trustee Brown has voted aye, Trustee Irvin voted aye, Trustee Vice President West aye, Trustee Lopez aye, and Mark's aye. So I have five ayes. The nays are?
No.
Trustee Newman and Trustee Walker. So we have two noes. The motion passes for Item D2 and E1, 1 through 58. And now, we will put Item F2 for discussion. We put it at the end of the meeting after, wait a minute, Item B5.
President Marx?
Yes?
I did not want that to go to discussion. I just wanted us to have a separate vote.
Oh, yes, okay.
In consent, so that we specifically recognize the classified staff, not just bury it in a consent.
All right, thank you, Trustee Brown. Okay, so we will have a separate vote on Item F2. Would you like to make the motion, Mr. Brown?
Yes, please.
Okay, is there any comment on Item F2? Seeing none, is there a second?
I will second.
Okay, Vice President West seconds that. All those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Aye, okay, I see all the hands raised. Any dissenting? None, it passes unanimously. 7-0. All right, thank you. That was much easier than roll call on each one. So I like being able to see all of you. And now, we will move to Item A9, Approval of Our Order of Discussion Action Items. Is there anyone wishing to comment on that? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the Order of Discussion Action Items.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Trustee Newman makes a motion to approve. Do you have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Walker, and I should have allowed Arnov to vote. I apologize, Arnov. We will get you in this vote. Okay, so the students get to vote first. So how do the students... Do the students approve of the Discussion Order Action Items?
Aye.
Yes, okay. The rest of the board, all those in favor of the Approval of Order Discussion Action Items? Aye, raise your hand. I still don't see one. Okay, I saw seven of you voted yes. Is there any dissenting votes? Seeing none and hearing none, we shall move on to our period for public presentation. And I believe, do I read this? I read this. "In response to the Governor's Executive Order," I read this earlier, but something similar, "and Resolution 19/20-17, delegating authority to take necessary action to protect students and staff from the spread of coronavirus, we adopted," the Board of Education adopted in March 18, 2020, "that our meetings are closed to the public until further notice, but we have made adaptations and allowed for the public to comment." Dr. Naguchi, is there any comment from the public at this time?
There is not.
Okay, so now, we will move on to Item... Let's see, and we had asked for the items to be 250 words or less, so that is on our website when you log into the meetings. So now, we will move on to Item B1, Our Student Representative Report. Arnov, you are on.
Good evening. I wanted to say thanks again for everyone's kudos and best wishes towards the graduating classes this year. It's not obviously how we envisioned ourselves graduating, but we're all adapting and getting through. And I wanted to take the time to acknowledge and commemorate all my fellow graduating students, 12th graders and 8th graders alike, because this year is definitely different. You know, but so are these graduating classes. Obviously, the situation isn't something that we wanted, but I think what better class to handle it than the class of 2020? Being a part of this class, I can confidently say that, you know, we're a class of resilience, hard work, and smiles. So congrats again to all my fellow graduates, and I can't wait to see all the wonderful things all of you guys do in your futures. With that, as we mentioned before, we had our Digital Tournament of Talent this year, and I'm sure all of you can already wear, but it was a huge success, which I'm really happy to report. Big thanks to everyone who helped with this. It's a big team, Ms. Hinkle, Ms. Goulart, Ms. Burrows, Interhigh Council, and more people, a lot of people. So we really had to act fast and make this switch to digital, because we still wanted to honor everyone who was a part of it. Everyone's incredibly talented, so we know we had to get it done, and we did. And as I mentioned before, we had 2,200 views over on YouTube and Facebook, and over 1,000 people voting in the audience. That's really something we maybe weren't expecting, you know, first time during digital, but we got through it, and it was something everyone enjoyed. And congrats to all the winners and everyone who was participating. It was really amazing. That was a great way to cap off the year too, because, you know, with Interhigh Council, we were working on a lot of various things, but when it comes down to it, Tournament of Talent was something we planned every time. That was our main goal, and we got it. And then working, which was a huge accomplishment and a great way to cap off the year. Speaking of which, end of the year is coming soon, so my time as a district student rep is coming to an end. I said this at our last meeting, but I'll happily say it again. Thank you so much for all this, for everyone, and this opportunity. I've learned a lot. You guys have taught me a lot. It's been an invaluable experience and a really fun ride. It's been a blast. So thanks so much for the opportunity to be the MCS student rep. And with that being said, there's a new student rep, Mr. Carson Karanza, a rising senior over at Modesto High. And let me just say, this man is on another level. He was his freshman class president, his sophomore year class president, and his junior, he became his ASB vice president. And now, going into his senior year, he is the ASB school president. He's the founder of the Real Life for Life Club at Mohi, and the president of that. He's a school site student council representative, the California Association of Student Leaders, or CASL, Northern Regional Director of all of California, and a lot more. Just from hearing that, I'm sure you guys can understand what kind of student Carson is, a hard worker, and his love for the community is evident, and helping others, and everything that he's done. And because of that, I know he'll make an amazing student representative for Modesto City Schools. So with that being said, thanks again for this awesome experience, and now I will pass it over to our 2020-2021 student rep, Mr. Carson Karanza.
All right, I see Carson is... Oh, there he is.
Hi, everyone. As Arnov said, I'm Carson. Thank you so much for this. I'm so grateful for this opportunity to serve as next year's student representative to the Board of Education. Throughout this next year, I look forward to improving student representation at our Interhigh meetings in hopes of bringing in more student voices from our district. And thank you, Arnov, for all your work throughout this year, and I'm so grateful that you were able to pull off Tournament of Talent, even though it was digital. It turned out great. That's all I have to say. Thank you again for the opportunity.
All right, it's great to see you again online, and hopefully, we'll be able to see you in person in the fall in this room. So it'll be great to meet you in person. So thank you. Do I have any comments from board members? All right, it was great. Two of us, Trustee West, or Vice President West and I, were able to listen to all of the interviews online and watch it just as you can, the Tournament of Talent. So they each had a recorded questions, 11 questions that they answered, and so we were able to see them online. And then the students, there were, I think, seven or eight students that were also on that represented different school sites. So thank you very much for introducing Carson to us today, Arnov. And it has been great working with you, and I know we gave you your plaque last board meeting, and we're able to say hi to you, so it's great to see you online again tonight.
Of course, thank you so much, yeah.
All right, so now, we'll move on to our Item B2, Modesto Teachers Association Report.
Hello, hopefully you all can hear me. My name is Daryl James. I'm the first vice president of Modesto Teachers Association. I'm also the scholarship chair, and I want to come before you guys this evening and let you know about the scholarships that we gave out and the winners, as well as where they're headed and a couple of other things. So let me go through these and tell you, there's three separate ones that we get. Let me go through them with you, tell you who the winners are and where they're going and what they're majoring in, and you'll kind of see what kind of students we have in Modesto City Schools. The first one is the Cecil Kirfman Award, and this is in recognition of Mr. Kirfman, who was a social science teacher at La Loma Junior High, and also a leader in the California Teachers Association. And in this scholarship, we are able to give out one per school for those that do apply. And we didn't have somebody from every school this year apply, so we were able to give out two to some other schools. So each one of these scholarships is $1,000. The first one went to Erica Axthel from Gregori, and she's headed to San Diego State, and she wants to be a speech and language pathologist. Michael Hildebrandt, he's headed to Washington State. He's from Johansson. He's headed to Washington State, majoring in physics. Jack Lickie, who you heard just a minute ago, he's from Byer, and he's headed to Yale, and he's majoring in chemistry. Daniel McClure is from Enoch's, and he is headed to UC Irvine in Computer Engineering. Hannah Murray, she's headed to the University of Tennessee, and she's gonna major in Public Relations. Andrew Nguyen is from Enoch's, and he's headed to UC Davis in Chemical Engineering. Indiana Westcott is headed to MJC and beyond, and is gonna major in Physical Therapy. So those, we're able to give out seven of those to those deserving students. The second one we give out is the John Walther Scholarship, and this is one based from John Walther, who was an English teacher at Downey High School and also a president at MTA. And in order to apply for this one, the students have to say they're gonna head into education. They're gonna head into the jungle and do what... and, and do what we love to do. So this year's winner is, there's four of them in this one, each a thousand dollars. The first one is from Davis and it's Elizabeth Cimenez Yipes. And she's headed to Stan State to be a math and elementary ed mathematics teacher. Then there is from Downey, Bryson Betancourt. He's headed to Chico to major in agricultural education. And then from Enoch's is Alyssa Parmalay. And she's headed to MJC plus that to be an elementary teacher. And then there's Alejandra Childress. And he is headed to CSU Fresno, majoring in ag ed. Okay. The final scholarship we give out is the Frank Vanderborgh Scholarship. Some of you that have been on the board a while knew Frank. He was the president and executive director of MTA. Now, this one is awarded just to one person who had strong academics, lots of activities, and also whose parent was active in MTA activities. And this year went to Jack Lickie from Byer, who's, as I said earlier, headed to Yale to major in chemistry. Now, what I would like to do is they're gonna, we have also took out an ad in the B. And I'm going to try my best to share this. And I'm going to hope it works. But here's, you may have seen it. I don't know if you guys can see this. This is the ad that went in the B yesterday and it'll be in next Sunday. It's a full page ad that we took out for these scholarships. It'll be in there, like I said, yesterday and then next Sunday, if you happen to miss it. We also have it put on a blast. Whoops, I gave you the wrong one. We also have it put on blast on the Facebook page for the Modesto B. So you'll see something like this, where it shows the kids. And then you can click on it to get more information about each student. And that'll run on their Facebook page till the end of June. Now, if you also need to see it and you can't get to those, you also can see it on the MTA website. We're very happy to be able to give these scholarships to these kids. They're so deserving. It's a pleasure to read through them and, and go through all these things. Thank you.
Daryl, were you able to share your screen? We didn't, we did not see.
Okay. Screen share. Let me see if I can.
Try it. If it doesn't work, I know we'll get to see it in the newspaper, but it's.
Yeah, I will. Okay. I tried to share. Did this come, can you see that one?
No, it did not come through.
It didn't come through. Okay.
So Daryl, you'll know that you're sharing if you have a red box around the document.
Around it? Okay. Because I hit the share button and then I hit, like, share my desktop window. And it's, let me try one more.
There's some PD in your future.
Yeah. Well, I've done it before. That's, no, I mean, you're right. That's for sure. It's, I don't know. Maybe that one will work. Now, it's not working. I'm sorry.
Okay, that's all right. We so appreciate it, though. Thank you for sharing that. I'm, it's always a thrill to hear all the students that you're able to sponsor. So I, I appreciate that. And you're sharing all of the where they're headed and even the Frank Vanderborgh scholarship. That was cool to hear his name again. It's been a long time.
Yeah, it's been a while. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Daryl. That was great. All right. Moving on to our report on summer programs. This, the timing is perfect. I've had people asking me questions. And I talked to Dr. Naguchi. She's, and so she knew I was asking some questions about this. And even, I forgot to say that I had a parents' leading change meeting and they were asking about the summer school programs. So I'm looking forward to seeing this. And are, am I turning it over to you or Mark Herbst and Steve Hurst?
Ah, you can give it to me right now.
Okay, Mark.
President Marks. Yeah, thank you. Steve Hurst, Director of Student Support Services, is going to do the presentation on our summer program. I do want to start off just by saying we are thrilled to be able, to be able to offer a comprehensive program that Steve's going to articulate to you tonight. I also, real, real quick, and then I'll turn it over, want to say how much I appreciate him and his team. He had to put this together in short order. And I think that you guys are going to find that the plan is comprehensive and valuable. Also want to express my appreciation to our bargaining partners, both MTA and CSEA in terms of working with us. So anyway, Director Hurst, take it away.
Thanks, Mark. Appreciate that. I'm going to take a second here. Let me share my screen with you guys so you can see the presentation.
Looks like you and Chad are in the same town.
Hey, you know, it was one to pick. Hopefully, I've chose the right one.
Yep.
There we go. All right. So good evening, President Marks, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Naguchi. Appreciate that, that you invited us here today. So obviously, the opportunity to share the summer programs from Modesto City Schools and what we're going to be offering is a great opportunity. Purpose of this report is to provide insight into the rationale behind the summer offerings, share information regarding the programs that we are offering, and then look at the next steps that we have planned for the programs. Summer programs definitely aligns with our district goal, District Goal One, which is to increase academic and achievement and ensure equitable access to enable all of our students to attain college and career readiness. And specifically, when we look at the alignment to subgoals one point two, one point four, and one point five, we can see how those really tie into what we're trying to do during the summer. So the summer schools are intended to extend the school year to provide enrichment and academic supports for our students. Modesto City Schools has traditionally provided various summer programs for elementary academic and enrichment, for special education, secondary seven through twelve, as well as site-based specialized programs during the summer. Due to the coronavirus COVID nineteen, changes to the traditional format and alignment of our programs needed to be implemented. Many of our students have, will have experienced loss during the school closure, and we recognize that. So our summer programs are a great opportunity to remediate the loss and provide students with an opportunity to continue to grow. For the summer of twenty twenty, all programs will be offered via a distance model, recognizing the fact that all of our students have a one-to-one device the district has been able to provide to them. Programs will begin, being offered starting June fourth and ending June thirtieth for a total of nineteen instructional days of support. This mirrors our traditional summer school schedule from the previous years. Special education's extended school year has twenty days of instructional support. And all programs have one teacher workday prior to the start of instructional support. This year, we're proud to be able to offer the following programs for our students. For our K six remediation, we will have that. Seven twelve credit recovery for remediation. We're going to offer a SWAN math summer program for support at the SWAN math pilot sites for extended school year in grades K through twelve. And we're looking at an enrichment that will be for all of our students. The K six remediation model will be a distance model that will use Freckle by Renaissance learning. This online program provides research-based lessons for students to work on independently based on their own level of placement following a completion of a diagnostic at the beginning. The first time the student logs on to the program, they will be required to complete the diagnostic so that an individualized plan can be implemented. Students will be assessed in both English, Language Arts, and Math. And due to the online platform, we are able to support a far larger number of students than in previous years. This year, our goal is to provide student-supported remediation to up to three thousand students using the Freckle platform. For comparison's sake, last year's K six remediation had a little bit over eleven hundred students participate. So definitely a large increase there. For the nineteen days of summer school, teachers will be providing support to the families to help students access the program, complete the initial placement test. Teachers will then monitor student progress and achievement, and which will, they'll then help them in providing guidance to struggling students and their parents to ensure the students are consistently accessing the program on a daily basis and making gains. The students will all be recommended by their teachers and site admin, just as we've done in our previous years. We had to do it a little bit different, but we've been reaching out to all the parents and students, seeking a commitment to participate on a daily basis. And to prepare our teachers, we're offering an online training, actually was offered today, where they went through the program and how to work with their students. One bonus of using Freckle is that this program is available for all of our students in grades K through seven and that all of the students have access to the program, even if they don't have teacher support, beginning here in mid-May and going through August. We're going to be working with our relations department on advertising the availability of this program to our students and to push out reminders to our students to encourage them to participate. As of today, access has already been placed on our websites. There are links there for students where they can go straight in, click on the Freckle icon. It will take them straight to the, the program and allow them to begin working immediately. And also, that same link has been put there for our teachers to allow them immediacy of access to the program. For grades seven through twelve, we are looking at credit recovery being offered to students who need to remediate a grade. Students who need to remediate their grade will be invited to participate in summer school through the distance learning model using the Apex Learning System. This is the same platform that we've used in previous summers, but the difference is we had to modify it slightly for a distance learning model. We've been utilizing this model during the last six weeks through our ESS, Extended Summer School. So we know that we have a good model in place and we have a great way to support our students. Teachers are going to be available to the students. They will continue to monitor the progress of the students towards completion. And they will, we will have two sessions each day. So students could take up to two courses if necessary. Last year, we had a little bit over sixteen hundred students who were able to recover a credit through their summer school. This year, we have the ability through this model to enroll up to twenty eight hundred students for credit recovery. For our SWAN math program, we will be offering this, obviously, at our SWAN math pilot sites. And they will follow the SWAN math guidelines for distance learning. SWAN math has come out with their own guidelines to help support us during this time of distance learning. Recommended students will be invited to participate in daily sessions that will utilize SWAN-created video lessons that are integrated with a teacher support and a teacher part of the lesson. The initial lessons, we're going to focus on that review of current grade level aspects and then move on to a preview of the next grade level. So it's going to be very beneficial to our students who need that, that additional support to already have a preview of what's going to come for the next year. At this time, Senior Director Kim Newton's going to share the enrichment opportunities that we have for the district this year for our students.
Thank you, Steve. We are really excited to provide a summer enrichment opportunities for kindergarten, actually through twelfth grade. This has been updated since we did the slide, students. And we are going to be providing thematic units that include STEM, which again, just a quick reminder, is science activities, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics, as well as physical activity, just getting the kids out and moving some history topics and social emotional learning. We will go live, I believe, June third. Students and families will access this through the distance model. And it will be accessed through a Google site on the district webpage. Could you move that forward for me, Steve? Mr. Hurst, can you move that forward?
I'm trying. He doesn't want to go. Let me try one more place. Sorry, but I'm catching up for some reason now. Are you able to see that? No.
We're on the same slide.
Let me try and reshare. Wrong slide.
There you got it. Thank you. So for the K six area, we will have eight self-paced thematic units with links to virtual field trips and hands-on activities that families can do. Some of the themes include the ocean, our environment, traveling in time, at the movies. There's a fashion design unit, space, and around the world. And in addition, our students will have an opportunity to sign up for coding courses. That'll be K twelve, as well as some Lego and reading challenges.
Let's try it again. Sorry about the technical. So our next steps is obviously looking and evaluate the effectiveness of our programs, really to determine what worked well for us and what we didn't do well with. And then the really is the increase our student outcomes and enrichment opportunities as we move forward with these unknown times that we're facing.
That's awesome.
So it looks like you have questions. You got it to the last slide. All right. Good job. I know we're all adapting in this time. So now I will find out if we have any questions from board members. So I need the screen back so I can see them. So if you could pick out the question screen, thank you. All right, now I can see. Okay, we have a question from Ms. Newman, trustee Newman, and then Mr. Brown.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hurst and Ms. Newton for the report. I'm excited to see about summer school. I, my, my sons did a summer school class on Apex and so it's, you know, effective way to get some credits done on especially our health classes. And so that program has been working, working well for some time. So I think it's very adaptable to, to the distance learning. So with regard to our K8, that's going to be the real different format that we have going on. What's the criteria, the, the students that are recommended for summer school through K through 8, they're recommended by their teacher, is that right?
That is correct. So if you're in the 7, 8, they're normally being recommended because they also need to remediate a class and we will be utilizing Apex and SWAN for those students. For the K6, they're recommended by their teachers each year, so it's the same process.
And what's the criteria for recommendation?
Basically, you're looking at the performance of that student against their grade level standards and are they meeting or needing additional assistance? So a teacher would be looking at the performance for that student during the year that they've had to determine whether they feel that the remediation would help them meet the next grade level.
Okay. And then in terms of our expectations for parents, I know with the Apex, there's very little need for parent involvement at all. It just, you know, the, the student just does the program and, and does it when they're supposed to do it. And, and we have checks and balances on that. So what is our, what is our expectation for parent involvement for K through, K through 8, I guess, students?
So we would obviously want the parents to be supporting by having, making sure that their student is accessing on a regular basis, a daily basis. But the program actually is really designed to be independent for the students because it's based upon placing them at their level that is the correct level for them to work at. So if I could take a fifth grader, if they were working at a third grade level, we would actually remediate them at the level they're able to work in a self-paced and with our teachers providing support to them as well as being able to reach out to the parents if the parent feels they're struggling.
Right. Thank you.
Muted. Or President, you're muted.
Thank you. I wanted to make sure that you could hear everyone well. So thank you for letting me know that. We are going to go to trustee Brown and then trustee Irvin and then trustee West. So trustee Brown?
Yes, I'm, I'm pleased to see how many students we're going to be able to reach. And I am curious, I know through Love Modesto, there has been an effort to reach out and find retired certificated teachers who are willing to work with students. I'm wondering if we have thought of possibly engaging that group in conjunction with our teachers if we can identify a student that needs one-on-one remediation. Would something like that be available and have we reached out to see if, if we can utilize that group of volunteers?
Uh, we have not. I'm not going to say that it's not something we couldn't look at. It's not something we had because we were really focused on the whole aspect of the distance model and that we knew we needed to come up with a platform that would allow remediation, but not bring students into contact necessarily. So that's something I could definitely look at.
Good, thank you.
Okay, trustee Irvin?
Uh, yes. I saw the STEAM program up there and I wanted to know, is there going to be any efforts to like, on the arts part, to do something around theater, theatrical arts? To be able to put something together for kids where they could play roles and Zoom it, you know, or things like that, to do parts. I know, you know, during the summer, it's going to be very, very, you know, tough to find ways for them to be creative, but I was just thinking from a Zoom perspective, you know, having kids act out different parts and roles via Zoom might be a good, a good opportunity to, to do theater. Just a thought.
No, it's a great idea. We, we are still putting the units together. Sorry, I got an echo with these. But what we are doing are the, we're doing some TikTok videos for some of the physical activities. So the, the students are going to have an opportunity to do some acting and, and submit if they choose, if they so choose. But as far as like specific theater works of art, we haven't gone that way because we weren't putting everybody together at this point in time.
Okay. Thank you. TikTok is good.
All right. Thank you, trustee Irvin. Vice President West?
Uh, thank you. I was dropped a couple of times from this and couldn't see all the slides. So I apologize if I'm asking something that I might have missed while I was dropped. I first of all, want to say this is really impressive to me that we're able to put together not only remediation and help for these students in reading and math and core subjects, but we have such a great, rich enrichment program as well. And I can't help but think it seems like a lot more students can be reached this summer than if we were a traditional school. Is that correct? Does it seem like maybe we're going to be able to help a lot more students this year, this summer?
I definitely think that our, our goal was to reach more students through this platform because we could. I mean, there are trade-offs. There's, there's definitely pluses and minuses of both platforms. But, but going distance model, more students are able to access the teacher and have that feedback than the one-on-one piece that you might have in a classroom. So it's definitely a different model. And, you know, from the enrichment, that's an opportunity for all students that Kim talked about there, which is not something we've been able to do because we've typically had about 200 students participate physically in that type of enrichment.
Thank you. I, I know a lot of kids are bored right now. And so those who maybe wouldn't have wanted to come to school during the summer in the past might be more willing to take on things because there's not a lot else to do. So I'm really encouraged and it seems like you guys have done a lot of work to make sure that this is very organized. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President West. Oh, trustee Walker.
Okay, I'm unmuted. Again, it looks good. I think this year, better than last year. Certainly at K through 8 math, I'm happy to see that Swan's in the house. Woo-hoo. What I didn't see is when we talked about 9 through 12. Is the goal to bring in the Apex math or are we going to rely on Pearson, the new Algebra I, Geometry, Algebra II curriculum? That will be my first question.
So in all of the 7 through 12 or 9 through 12 is going to be offered to the Apex platform. So if a student is needing to remediate and make up a credit in math, they would be taking the Apex math course.
That was my assumption because I know we approved that. And the second piece, we'll go back to the sort of the K through 12. I noticed you had coding courses up there. What does that look like? What is that platform in the sense that that's something I'm doing a lot of research on because that's a direction I'm going immediately? And I certainly have ideas of what I look at as solid-based, structured versus some of the other things out there. And so I'm not clear, what does that look like without going too deep in the weeds?
Um, so trustee Walker, I'm probably the last person to tell you the specifics on coding, but I will tell you that we have two expert tech coaches, Joseph Mesa and Matthew Ketchum, that are putting together the coding portion right now. And it's very specific by grade span. So I know we have a K2 section, a 3-6 session, and then the secondary section. So as far as what the specifics of that are, I really can't speak to that and I apologize, but I can definitely get more information and bring that back to you.
Okay. Um, I think the follow-up there is I have an email chain with a company I've been working with for about six months. And I've noticed that Mr. Ketchum's name has floated through my email a couple of times with my contacts up there. So it'll be interesting to see if they're not using that platform, which I'm not going to name in a public meeting, as to what drove that decision, certainly at the 7, 8 level, because there was a really good setup for sort of what we call explorations in coding, build that junior high base that would lead you into a high school program fully prepared. And I'd be interested in seeing what his take on that was, only because I've seen his name float through email chains and it has nothing to do with MCS. It just has to do with me out investigating what platforms and programs are out there and available for use. And I'll leave it there and maybe he'll reach out to me or somebody else can. I'm just curious because that instruction can vary widely from Lego to actually programming, if that makes sense.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions. On, are we able to take attendance at these meetings? That was my first question.
Are you talking about attendance for summer school?
Yes.
No. We're not set up. We are able to monitor how often the students are on and when the last time they were on and how much time they're spending on. But we have not built it specifically where we have an attendance model as part of it.
Okay. And then are they able to take more than one class? It looked like that, especially for elementary school, but I wasn't sure for the other options that were available.
So for the elementary, we have the ability for them to work both in language arts and math at their level. And we've targeted those two specifically. At the 9, 12 level, we will have a morning session and an afternoon session. So the student could access two courses in a day if they needed to.
Okay. And then on the classes that they're able to take in 9, 12, on enrichment, is the coding one the only one that they're able to take? No, the coaches are putting together some choice boards that are a little bit more, they have content more appropriate to our second, for our secondary students. And then one of the choice boards is all on college exploration. So they'll have an opportunity to start exploring colleges that they might be interested in attending. Oh, that's cool. And then one question on the, at the movies, is that, what is that? I was curious. We're still putting it all together. I can tell you after Friday when we have it all together. But I think what they're using is like movie titles and then they're exploring a little bit more about the background behind the, the topic of the movie. Okay, I didn't know because I attended an A, at the annual education conference, one where students were making movies and they were learning how to do the aspects of a movie, which would be writing a script. They use it in the classroom actually to help the students with their writing skills and then memorizing and acting skills. So it was a really interesting one that was shared down in Los Angeles. I know Vice President West was there, I think, I believe, and so was, I think, trustee Irvin and maybe trustee Lopez. But it was a very interesting, it was very engaging for the students. I could tell the students were very engaged in that program. So I didn't know if that's what we were going to do, something like that, at the movies. The coaches have still been creating the unit. So we will, Wednesday is kind of our deadline to get things loaded into the website and then do all the troubleshooting we need to do. So I'll have more information after Wednesday. Okay, that's great though. I was excited to see the list of the options for all the students. Just, I mean, if, if I was online learning and these were the options that I had, I'd be really excited to click on them and find out, woo, what can I learn this summer and what can I do? And my parents would be so happy to have me out of their hair probably, going and doing something on the computer that was engaging like these things. So it's good. And I'm sure our NASA retiree is really excited about the earth and science one. So I would guess. All right. So were there any other questions? Did I miss anyone on the questions? Okay. So I don't see any other little hands on the screen. All right, that concludes that. Do we have any comments? Trustee Superintendent Naguchi, were there any comments on this item?
Not at this time.
All right, just wanted to make sure I don't always ask that and should have asked that. All right. And I appreciate that. That was a report. Thank you for the thorough report. We enjoyed learning a lot more about summer school and look forward to seeing how many. It'd be awesome if we made the 2,800 threshold there. That'd be great. Yes, just as Superintendent Naguchi.
Yes, something I know that Mr. Hurst, or Mr. Hurst said this earlier, but I want to reinforce it. All of our kids have a computer in their hand. We have a call center that is open all summer long to ensure that they have connectivity. Every student K8 can go into Freckle and access both math and English. So while yes, 3,000 of them will be facilitated with a teacher, the program is designed to be self-diagnostic. And so I would encourage parents and, and, and students to, when, when they find extra time to go in and, and access the English and the math because we recognize in this last three months, the last two and a half months, that we are, do have a, a slide in learning. And this is an opportunity for some remediation and some extra time on tasks with English and math. So I encourage all students K8 to engage in that. That's it. Thank you. You're muted again, Cindy.
Yep, just, okay, so I'm, want to do a time check right now. It's 7:27 and I usually like to take a break of, at 7:30. I wanted to see if, I'm not sure how long these next two items are going to take. They may not take long at all, but they might take a while. So I just wanted to check and see if we are ready for a five-minute break. Can we take, no, everybody wants to keep going. All right, we'll keep going. Okay, I just want to make sure I can do this. So we will keep going then. And we will move on to item B for report on end of year. Mr. Godot?
Good evening, President Marx, trustees, Dr. Naguchi, and Cabinet. I can see the red square around my screen. So it looks like everybody can see the PowerPoint on our report on end of year. It's my pleasure this evening to bring to you the information that we're going to be sharing this evening around all of the work that we're doing between now and our managers and teachers return to work in August, actually July and August. A number of cabinet members and senior directors and district managers will be sharing various information that will update you on the bulleted items that you can see here on this slide, including fiscal considerations, which is obviously a, a, a big topic right now, as well as the number of things that we'll be accomplishing over the summer, including bond projects, district projects, our summer feeding program, the technology work that's going to be taking place, a great amount of professional development, how we're building the leadership capacity of our managers. We'll talk about how we are dealing with register, student registrations and work permits this summer, as well as the thought processes and planning going into the roundup, student roundups as they would be returning at the beginning of the year and orientations for students. Mr. Henderson will give us an update on human resources. We'll talk a little bit about the opening of schools and what those various models might look like. And then I'll wrap it up with some information around the week we'll spend when our, our administrators come back. So the presentation, as I look to identify which goals, district goals this presentation would align with, and I think it literally aligns with every one of our five district goals. So you're going to get a piece about academic achievement, ensuring, ensuring high-quality professional development, our, our focus on providing a safe and welcoming, respectful learning environment as well as fiscal and operationally sound district and how we're recruiting, hiring, training, and retaining high-quality staff. So with that, I would like to turn the microphone over to Associate Superintendent Tim Zerly for our next slide.
Good evening, President Marx, trustees. Just a few short months ago, the state was enjoying the, the longest expansion in history. And, and at that point in time, the governor released his proposal for the 2021 budget year. And the state was projecting a surplus of nearly $6 billion going into, going into the 2021 fiscal year. And, and just as, as quickly as, as that was announced, things changed. And as you can see on this slide here, we anticipate and, and the governor anticipates, as was his briefing last week, a far greater economic impact than back in 2008. And, and currently, the governor, in his May revision, is estimating a revenue loss of $41.2 billion as a result of COVID-19. And then you'll, you'll hear and you probably have heard that the state, because of this revenue loss, is facing a $54 billion budget deficit going into the next fiscal year. If we go back to 2008, just for comparison, early recession estimates at that point in time were, were $28 billion. So this is a far greater impact than, than back in, in 2008. And also there's, there is a talk about the state's rainy day fund balance. And it currently is $18 billion. And, and one interesting thing about this is only $550 million is available for, for K14 education. And those funds are being used for the 2021 fiscal year. However, with the remaining funds, Proposition 2, which created the rainy day fund, stipulates that only half of the $18 billion, or no more than half of the $18 billion can be used in the first year of a budget emergency. So even though there's $18 billion in the fund, only half of that can be used in the 2021 fiscal year to offset the state's emergency. The budget picture will not be clear until August. We do know that the governor released his May revision last week and, and we will be using that information to prepare our budget projection for you that will, will be presented in more detail and full detail on June 22nd. At that point in time, we gave this to staff. Revenue reductions were predicted in the 2% to 10% range. And sure enough, the governor announced last week that our local control funding formula revenue will be reduced by 10% going into the 2021 fiscal year. Now, there are triggers. The trigger can be pulled if the federal government releases more stimulus money, but that will remain to be seen, which is why we state that the budget picture will not be clear until later in the summer, sometime in August. The board has already seen this slide. We, we did present it. We, we presented this to you at the last board meeting in a report. And this was presented to the staff this last year so they could see exactly what our plans were around measures D and E and summer bond projects. The same with this slide. These are our district-funded projects that mainly target our, our secondary schools and then our support sites across the district. Summer feeding, this is an update. We currently are doing a curbside program in which we are allowed to do under a health emergency waiver that expires June 30th. We just found out today that that is being extended. So we will continue our current curbside program feeding throughout the summer. Typically in the summer, we do, we go to parks and feed at the parks. We will be continuing our curbside program that we're currently doing. We believe it's better, we, we have a better opportunity to control the flow of traffic, to control our facilities easier than we could control, we could control a city park. And so there will not be a transition this summer, even though this slide, this slide was created last week. Based on the information we received today, we will, we will now be continuing our curbside program at our school locations as they are currently.
All right, so the projects that we're working on in technology are part of our overall process and also our goals and mission. and also our goals and mission to lower the total cost of ownership with our technology. And you've seen a lot of these components go in front of the board for approval. But first is going to be merging our databases with our power school because we have two separate ones, one for elementary, one for high school. And consolidation will help us not only with lowering our operational costs, but also making long-term ease for data access for the end users, the teachers, and the administration. Online registration system, I know that we've talked about that one in the past. And then we're going to be doing our next-generation upgrades for our firewall will help with some things relative to malware and some viruses, as well as disaster recovery and the continued Chromebook implementation that you've seen through the board communication in the one-to-one rollout through K6, as well as a final implementation this summer to make it easier for educational minutes, meaning when a student logs in, we're going to have a simple one login interface that's a portal for them to get to all the applications that that teacher has available for those students and an ability to track progress with those systems.
Okay, this is Lauren Odell, and I want to talk with you about our summer professional development. We have quite a bit going on. In fact, our adoptions just started this week. We have multiple adoptions, and all of the teachers need to be trained well in that curriculum. So we have a couple of different options that we're doing. We have webinars going on. And we're also working through the options for some social distance type in-person for those that would be more comfortable with the books in hand. That's, we're still exploring the opportunities with our publishers for that. I'm going to leave the site leadership training to Brad in just a minute. We're fast and furiously working on training and preparing that for all of our sites to be ready for the opening of schools, whatever that may look like, in August. The other thing that we've been deeply considering and planning is looking at what are the essential skills for distance learning? Whatever model that we may be in for periods of time, we want to make sure that teachers are comfortable with not only the technology required, their comfortable, their level of comfort with what they're required to use for distance learning, but also regardless of the format that we find ourselves in, the pedagogy, the instruction being the highest quality that we can provide for our students. So we're really working on providing great opportunities for our teachers. I will say that that also goes for parents. We're working on a lot of things to rule those out so the parents can be involved and feel knowledgeable about what's happening with their students. And of course, as we have new teachers and new staff come on, we will ensure that they have the opportunity, multiple opportunities, these same opportunities regardless of when they come on into our teams. And we're looking forward to our summer professional development. Thank you.
Okay, this is Brad Godot again. I'm going to speak to you about how we're building the leadership capacity of our site administrators and managers. As you realize, a few weeks back, we approved an assistant superintendent of Educational Services to work with our school leadership team. This transition from a senior director position to an assistant superintendent position was meant to really to help continue the work that we started this year, but further develop and refine our principal leadership pipeline, which you may know as the professional development instrument that we're using to develop our managers. And we're doing that collaboratively with our site administrators and our senior directors and really working to build our, particularly our internal managers that we're bringing on board, as well as supporting and building the capacity of those managers over the course of their career. This is really exciting work for us in Educational Services. We're also working with our senior directors to look at how we support them and their evaluation process. So we spent the last year, this past school year, working with our site principals and leaders in that group to identify a new evaluation tool for them moving into next year. And our plan now is to look more deeply at how we're using, or how we're using the evaluation process to support and grow our senior directors. As you can see from the second major bullet point there, supporting our administrators and our teacher leadership for next year. Lauren mentioned that first week of June, June 1st, 3rd, and 5th, we're working with our senior directors and cabinet members across CIPD and Student Support Services, as well as Educational Services and School Leadership and our principals to identify what do our teachers need to be prepared going into next year. And what we had planned two months ago doesn't look the same as what it does today. And so we're working on designing and really trying to deeply understand what are, what do our teachers need heading into next year based on what the different instructional models may look like. So we'll start that process, those three days in the first week of June, to work with the site leadership teams. Those are the teacher leaders at our individual sites and their administrative teams to begin that PD process. On June 2nd, we also have a K-12 admin meeting where we'll cover some important items heading into the summer that will start preparing us for the work that we need to do next year. On June 11th, we'll have another TK-12 administrator meeting. And this is exciting because we're actually going to be able to do some of the mandated trainings, including some, the suicide prevention work that we've done in the past in June, instead of doing it in July when we come back. So that's going to free us up, not only our district-level administrators, but most importantly, our site administrators, to be able to be on their campus more the day that we would typically be doing that training at a, at a school site. And then, of course, we've got professional development days scheduled for our new administrators that we'll be welcoming into Modesto City Schools. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Hertz, Associate Superintendent Mark Hertz.
Why, thank you very much, Associate Superintendent Brad Godot. As always, we continue to work on improving customer service even during the pandemic. There's actually a multitude of efforts going on to this endeavor, but I really want to kind of highlight two of them. The first, the board may know or have heard that we are moving to a new online enrollment system in an effort to make registration easier on our families. That's a big move. Ed Miller's been working on a modified version of this, basically since where our schools have been closed, and it's been incredibly successful. We're thrilled about the new, the new system coming in, as this new system is going to sync with our existing power school. And so that'll allow a benefit not only to our families, but also our employees. Another example, and I've got to give credit to Rachel Barkus and her team. The idea of obtaining work permits during this pandemic has been problematic. So Rachel and her team created a way that they could do this from an interactive standpoint. They created a number of digital interactive forms and electronic system for routing. This has been hugely successful in terms of interfacing back and forth with the kids, especially as they need work permits or attempting to get work permits. These are just two small examples of the litany of things that are going on out there. But I wanted to highlight the fact that customer service still maintain, is still is a tremendous priority in Modesto City Schools. And that's all I have on that slide.
Okay, Brad Godot back with you, and let's talk roundups and orientations. So if you're not familiar with the term roundup, this is the type of activity that a school site would do when we are welcoming students back to start the school year, but typically prior to the first day of school. So we had a, we met with our principal leadership team on Friday, May 8, to really take a look at how might we need to do things differently heading into next school year, knowing that if we have social distancing guidelines or any other guidelines or protocols that we need to follow, doing business as usual, it gets complicated. So we took a look at that, and we identified that one of the keys, really, as always, right? This is unusual, is that the key is communication. And how are we going to communicate with our students and our students' families over the course of the summer to prepare them heading into next year? So the beginning of this summer, all returning to new enrolled students will receive a letter from the school site. It'll be sent out by June 12 that will clearly outline when the first day of school is, what time does school start? It'll refer our parents to our district and school websites for summer updates so that they know where they can go to get the best information. Typically, in a normal year, we would send a letter out in July that would summarize, you know, when roundup is and when the orientations are. But we really, you know, not knowing as that information changes week to week, it seems, we want to make sure that we're pointing them to the most readily available and up-to-date information, which will be on our district website. By the third week of July, they'll receive another letter from the school site that will clearly outline or articulate the roundup and start of school information, which I'll cover are the two different options that we're looking at in just a moment. And we would typically include office hours in the letter that goes out in the summer, which would outline when our school sites are open, when they're closed, and the hours. But not knowing, right now that we're closed, not knowing when those school site offices would physically be open again for normal business, we did not want to create confusion by putting office hours in a summer letter and have parents coming down to a school site expecting us to be open and that not, that not happening. So the July communication will be important because at that, at some point in July, we're going to have to really make that determination as to what it's going to look like for bringing students back and how will those roundups and orientations look. We also want to include in that July communication to families, any information that we would have that would update them on what school is going to look like when students start on August 10. So looking at the two different options for the two grade levels, we'll start with grades 7 through 12, what the roundup options would be. Option A would be no restrictions, right? And I think that that isn't something that we would say would probably be at the top of the list right now. I mean, given what we know of with the social distancing guidelines, obviously, that's what we would love to see happen. So if everything's great, great, we're going to have our normal roundup activities. But if we're still dealing with social distancing guidelines or shelter in place, then we determine that the 8th grade and 10th through 12th grade returning students, and I'm talking about next year's 8th graders. So this year's 7th graders and this year's 7th through 11th graders, we would not do a roundup for them prior to the first day of school and that we would complete those necessary activities in the first day and the first week of school because we would have those social distancing guidelines and protocols established for what that model would look like. However, our 7th grade, 9th grade, and new students, so students transitioning from 6th to 7th and from 8th to 9th, or any new student coming into our district system, we will identify two or three days prior to the first day of school. Well, we'll work with those students to get some, that essential work done, specifically making sure that they have a one-to-one device, a computer, prior to the first day of school. And then any of those orientation and related welcome activities that we would typically be doing prior to school starting, we'll take the time in that first week of school to make sure that we're connecting kids to school. So it's not that we're eliminating those, but doing them in a normal roundup schedule just isn't feasible when we look at the days available and the staff. It just created some pretty significant challenges there. So TK-6, very similar. Option A would be if there's no restrictions, we'll do our normal roundup activities with those students. However, if we do have social distancing and shelter in place, or shelter in place guidelines in effect, there isn't necessarily a need to conduct those roundup activities prior to the first day of school because they can be, they can be completed the first day or the first week. And so with that, I will turn it over to Associate Superintendent Mike Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Godot. Good evening, trustees. Mike Henderson with an overview of human resources work. About a year ago, we researched and invested in a process, a system, to help us convert some of our paper-driven processes over to online routing. And I got to tell you where we are right now, that was, has been an invaluable resource. The board supported us with that. And for our staff to be working remotely across the district, if we were pushing the amount of paper that we had been in the past, it would be much, much more challenging. So we're going to continue. We have been doing the work converting forms and processes to online routing. We're going to keep that work going forward. My appreciation to both those who have driven that process forward, as well as staff that have been receptive to changing compared to the old way of doing things. So second, we're going to approach staffing on two fronts. One, complete the hiring process for essential staffing. Had some hard conversations with school sites about what exactly do you need in order for your master schedule to work and for your grade level numbers to work and what can wait? And we squeezed those numbers down and went forward with our essential staffing. Essential staffing for certain departments and divisions in order, technology, for example, to keep, keep the work going forward. But we know then we have to change and position ourselves to begin, as the district starts to look at evaluating its budgetary or fiscal priorities, we'll begin evaluating staffing in light of the budgetary impact as we head into 2020 to 21. Third, of all the things that are negotiable, working conditions is one of the most fundamental, of course. Salary, health and welfare, but working conditions, probably a close third there. And if ever there's been a change in working conditions in a very short amount of time, I think we've been witnessing it, you know, in the past couple of months. What we've had to change and pivot on such a, such a short notice just based on the circumstance has been pretty substantial. We would not be where we are, given the PD involved and the technology being in place and, and the teachers being able to operate as well as other staff. Where we are right now, without the work of the labor partners, both MTA and CSCEA, developing the MOUs, we're going to keep that work going forward as we look at the next iteration of what our educational program is going to look like, given the opening of schools that has been discussed and will continue to be discussed. And negotiations, we went into school closure at a time when we had negotiations open with MTA. We need to reengage to figure out how to move that process forward, as well as engage with CSCEA on negotiations process.
Alrighty, this is Dr. Naguchi to end this presentation. So this will be our last slide. Actually, I think there's one slide after this. I wanted to just stop for just a second and thank this team for all the work that they're doing. It is amazing how quickly we've pivoted our entire system. The work that we were doing two months ago is not even the work that we're doing now, and we're reframing each and every process that we have within the school district, from summer school, which is redesigned, evaluation redesigned, online registration redesigned, PD is redesigned, you name it, we're redesigning everything. And so this wouldn't happen if it wasn't for the management team and their 12 and 16-hour days, day after day after day. So I really do, I mean, I've given a shout out to this before, but just listening to this presentation again is just, it is amazing the work that we've done in this last two months. It truly is. I never would have guessed that we could have gotten here. But with that, we will be starting school August 10. In one fashion or another, at the center of our planning is to ensure that we have the health and safety of our schools and our community. And you've heard prior to this that, you know, we're really looking at multiple scenarios. I know I said in my beginning welcoming message, I talked a little bit about the four options that we're planning for. There's three listed here, but one of them, there's actually two that are embedded. Unfortunately, YouTube was not live the first seven or eight minutes of this presentation, so I'm going to go over them a little bit right now. We are planning for three different scenarios. One of the scenarios, we're going, we're going to bifurcate that. First is the traditional opening. We're planning to open traditional brick and mortar, and we're hoping for the best, but we know that we don't know what the future holds. So we're looking at a couple of other options. One is a hybrid option where kids would go to school part of the day and be home in distance learning format another part of the day. We're also looking at our distance learning model. That's what we're in right now. And we know that we have a whole lot that we can learn from, from this spring. And what can we do differently? How can we increase the educational opportunities for our students? We've learned a lot. And then lastly is the independent study option where we recognize there are some parents that would like a more self-paced program. So where are we at in this planning right now? We have generally put some things on paper, enough to be able to begin to get some feedback from our stakeholders. We will start this week by getting surveys out to all of our stakeholders to get input, not only in what will work for them as a family, but also from teachers, what didn't work and what did work in this current distance learning model so we can, again, improve our craft. We've begun working with MTA and CSCEA, but we recognize we need to get out and do additional work that have been scheduled to get input from teachers. And lastly, going back, taking all that information and putting it together and add, modifying and adjusting what we currently have on the books. and adjusting what we currently have on the books. What I'm hoping for is to come back June 8th with a board report and share specifically and in detail what those options are with the traditional, the hybrid and the distance learning. If we don't get all the work done and and the feedback in, then it'll be June 22nd. But rest assured, before we leave for the summer, the community and the board will have information on the different options that we have moving forward. You know, at the end of the day, we don't know what the future holds, but we do know that we need to take, we need to take a look at the guidelines that are set out either by the county or the state or both. So whatever the state and county provides to us in July, we are going to be prepared August 10th to have a high quality instructional program for our kids, certainly not to the level of the the traditional brick and mortar. I mean, that nothing can replace that, but I know that we have learned a lot over this this springtime and moving forward, I'm sure it will be stronger for the fall.
Okay, and last but not least, just a quick summary of our admin week and important dates. Typically, we refer to about the third week of July as an admin week when we bring all of our district managers back. That that report to work date is July 20th. We'll spend three days working with our certificated and classified managers going over the essential elements of what we need to know going into the 2021 school year. And then we'll also be working with our site administrators and their leadership teams to continue that professional development that started in in that first week of June that I spoke to earlier. And then we kind of wrap that week up with our principals meeting heading into the school year. So with that, I am happy to take questions.
All right. Well, we'll see if we can get all our, if you can take the question slide down, then we can see our board members again and we will move on to our questions. All right, there they are. Good to see you all again. Okay, so I'll go down the line. Trustee Walker, do you have any questions? Did he shake his head now?
No, I'm coming. I just not used to being first.
I know. Well, I'm trying to rotate you all around.
There you go. My question initially would go to Mr. Zerly, going back to slide four, where you talked about this May revise and these projections because I listened to that conference, I've read the reports. They literally cut at this point, my understanding is 10% off the LCFF relative to English learners and all those subcategories which would directly impact us if I'm not mistaken. Correct? That's not a fictional number at this point. That's an optimistic number.
That is not a fictional number. It's it's 10% off of our base grant, which then impacts the supplemental concentration grant add ons.
Correct. It has a domino effect.
Yes.
And then my second question is, having read that report and looked at the Ball Frost report and other things, what they put out at the May revise, if I understood what I heard, it was contingent on the fact that there's more federal money coming. So without another federal boost, that 10% is an extraordinarily optimistic number.
I'm I'm under the impression, and we're we're listening to School Services tomorrow, but in reading School Services' initial review, is that the reduction, the 10% could be triggered off if the federal government provides sufficient funding to backfill the cuts. So it's my understanding that 10% is the target, which could be less. Obviously, it could be more, but I haven't heard any of our consultants, experts advise that it's it could be greater than 10%. So that's if that answers your question.
I guess then my question would be, when you get a chance and you're in that briefing, then that would be nice to clarify.
We will.
Everything I've read at this point says that what we were presented on the May revise was all based on optimism that there was going to be another bank of federal money coming in. And if that does not come in, that they will go back and cut all of these numbers again. And so that would be an interesting question to get answered. Otherwise, I don't have any questions. My only comment would be, please, 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 please get us open standard normal. And we can discuss that later when we look at county data. But I've been following this since day one. Before this meeting opened, there was only one person in ICU in this county. There's only 20 people in the hospital out of 550,000. So I would hope that would influence our decisions, looking at the data, not necessarily what somebody's pushing. And then that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Walker. All right, then I see your hands raised on the screen. So I have Trustee West.
Thank you for this report. And I I also appreciate everything that went into making this all happen. I have just a quick question. The last slide talked about the admin days that were happening before the start of school. What what is what do the teacher workdays look like? Do we have those scheduled this year or what are your plans for that?
Brad, do you want to take that?
Yeah, sorry, I was thinking on that for a minute here. I I can't remember the dates off the top of my head, but the first, the first two days with teachers back are actually district professional development days. Our teachers report to their sites. We're actually already strategizing how we will, we will make those professional development days work well and be effective regardless of the situation, whether we have to do it remotely or we can do some form of social distancing on campuses. But we, that work with teachers coming back is really just an extension of the June 3rd, 5th, and the July dates working with the site leadership teams. So yes, yes, we definitely have our eye on that ball.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Trustee Lopez. Oh, you're muted.
You're muted.
Sorry about that. I was saying that my question is for for Tim in regards to the summer feeding program. So do you happen to have what, what was the timeline for the for the park feeding program that you usually do? I know that we had one last year and the year before that, but do we know the dates on what what days would would that be feeding? Would have been feeding?
We will get that for you. I'm, I believe our plan is it would be the the first of June. That, I mean, we will continue feeding once, once the the school year calendar is over. But I will, I'll make sure I update the board on the dates for that.
And my question is more, I know that we're going up to June 30th, but what I wanted to see, what was the difference between June 30th date and date to what we usually have folks do or we usually have available at the park? So I wanted to see how many days we wouldn't be serving compared to last year. So I know that we're now we're serving at the at the front end, past our, past our end of school day, but what would that gap between June 30th and how much of a gap would there be between June 30th and August 10th? And how can we work on minimizing that gap?
So I'm I'm not quite sure I understand the question. The reference on the slide was June 30th. That was our, that was when our waiver was set to expire and we would have to transition from our current curbside feeding to the park setting. But that waiver has been extended past June 30th. And so we can, we can keep our current feeding program in place after June 30th throughout the summer. I apologize if I wasn't clear on that.
Okay, sounds great.
Did you want to say something, Dr. Naguchi?
I was just going to ask Tim if he was comfortable in also showcasing the other, what is that, EPT, the other option for families for food over the summer?
There's not much I I know about it, but the state of California is creating a resource, a card, a purchasing card for families to buy food, our socioeconomically disadvantaged families. They, there is a website, a state of California website that they can go to and we will, we will have the information directing them to this website. We will, we will make sure it's in the hands of our families. So they will have, they will have purchasing cards available to them to buy food throughout the summer while, but they're still eligible for the curbside meal program that we're having as well, as well. So that's, that's exciting. That's going to be exciting information for our families.
I'll get that out in a B C. In addition, I know we're going to be doing a social media and we'll be getting it on all the websites also because that's a, that's a wonderful opportunity for families too. So thank you for that, Tim.
Trustee Newman.
There it is. Thank you to the team for getting this together, this report very thorough, lots of work has been done, obviously. Super excited about the extension of the food. I think that's really necessary for our students. I wanted to confirm something that I just want to make sure this fact is is known. The the students, for the most part, are at most of our sites are keeping, and this might be a question for Russ, are keeping their computers this summer, over the summer. Is that true?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, because as we, as I look at all this, it looks like that's what it is, but I I wasn't sure that we actually had said that. And so it's, it's really important that, you know, parents understand there's lots of resources available on there. They can log on to Swan Math. They can look at that. They can have their students working on that. And then this Freckle program for the self diagnosis, can any student log into that?
Yes, yep. And there's also a digital curriculum enrichment that both Lauren and I are working on as far as virtual field trips, just to give them a varied choice of what they can do during the summer.
And so in any of our students, because they still have their devices over the summer, could still access this information?
Yes.
And, and all of this is not dependent upon parent helping them do it. A student could do it on their own, right?
Correct, yep. And they don't have to be enrolled to summer school. We're giving them, going to give them a menu, so to speak, of things they can choose from as a student and they don't have to have any parent guidance for it.
And so we're communicating this to our students through Schoology prior to the end of school and through the communication with their their teachers that they're currently having right now, right?
Yes, yeah. As well as we're giving them technical support over the summer too, so they'll have that full access to the call center as well as drive up if they have their hardware failures they can come to. We just, they just honked the horn in the parking lot and we come out and resolve their problem for them.
And all of the, all of this information they can access on our website?
Yes, we're in the process of getting that updated and that information out. Yep.
Okay. I I just want to, I want to make clear, because I was surprised when my own student was keeping his computer and and then so I started reading on what we're doing on all of this and I want to make sure it's really clear. There's, there's a lot that a student can do to have not fallen behind and to not fall behind this summer and to even go move ahead. And so I I just want to make sure that, that, you know, the the word is out there very clearly that to those students that still want to learn, that still want to do this, to still want to, you know, get better themselves and to to continue to learn over the summer and over this time, that we are providing as many resources as we can. Is that, is that where we're at?
Yep, absolutely.
Absolutely. Yeah, that's really exciting. And I think that that just needs to be highlighted. So thank you. Thank you for the report.
Great.
So do I have any other questions? I didn't hear from, let's see, Mr. Irvin. I didn't see him. I'm sure he's there. All right. So I don't see any other questions. Did you have any questions, Mr. Irvin?
No, I didn't.
Okay, that's fine. This was great. Really appreciated all the hard work that has gone into this report and informing us. I, this is very helpful for me. I know it is for our staff and parents, if they're watching this, just to find out that all the collaboration that's going to be taking place on the internet and in different ways to ensure that our students continue on with the learning this summer and then getting prepared for next fall, which is all in motion. So I thank you, Dr. Naguchi, for your leadership in this. I know this has been really tough. Did you have a question or a comment?
I have a public comment on this.
Yes. And so I was going to ask, is there anyone from the public wishing to comment?
So I will read this into the record. So this came, comes from Elizabeth Guptill. It says, "Good evening. I would like to address the board and the MCS administration regarding the formulation of plans for our upcoming 2021 school year. I'm a second grade teacher at John Muir Elementary School and have taught in MCS for 21 years. Plans are obviously being made to ensure a safe and successful new school year. I'm concerned that the teachers who are currently participating in distance learning are not being asked or surveyed in any way about their experiences. It is troublesome that a committee made up of district staff, administrators and a few teachers are the only ones contributing to the dialogue that's taking place. I would like to encourage the board to require that most teachers are surveyed or reached out in some way. The administrators who are formulating plans have never taught digitally. Even Davis High School, our site that has been running digital instruction for the longest in our district, doesn't have a single administrator that has taught digitally. Digital learning and instruction are quite obviously very different from one another, from each other. You need to gather and consider our our expertise, experiences and opinions about how we should move forward. We need to be asked about what has, what has or has not gone well, as well as what we believe would be best moving forward. I urge you to please consult with a large number of current teachers as possible. Thank you."
Okay, so sometimes after someone comment, do you want to make any comments or no, or you'll just respond to the parent or teacher on an email and let us know?
For, is that question for me?
Yes.
Yes, I think that if the parent is listening, and I believe she is because I think she was confused about when it was going to be read, we are doing all of that. We are running as fast as we possibly can and we will, we are getting to it. And as you heard, surveys and stakeholder groups are all being formed, formed now to be able to get some input and and learn from where we've been as we move forward.
Yes. So it's good. We are working hard and diligently, so I appreciate all the hard work that the staff is doing and the district office in order to move with the changes that are happening as quickly as possible and preparing for the fall. So I appreciate that. Seeing no more hands up on the screen that I see, this was a report. We appreciate all the hard work that went into it. Thank you, staff and Cabinet for putting that and working on that. And now we will move on to item, one second, it's on my fold, B5, Approval of the First Reading of Proposed Draft of Exhibit E 5145.6, Parent Notification. And this was from last board meeting. We had moved it to this meeting to get some more information. So I see it is for Ms. Fortuna.
Good evening, President Marks, Vice President West, Trustees, Superintendent Naguchi and Cabinet. I'm here again to present the proposed draft of Exhibit 5145.6, Parental Notification. As President Marks mentioned, the exhibit was pulled into discussion during the previous board meeting and I was asked to seek legal counsel regarding the minimum legal requirement to inform parents of students in grades seven through 12 that their child will be receiving sexual health and HIV prevention education if that student enrolls after the start of the school year. So as you know, the following information was provided to trustees last week. If a child is enrolled after the start of the school year, the school district must notify the parent or guardian of each pupil at the time of that pupil's enrollment about instruction and comprehensive sexual health education and HIV prevention education and research on pupil health behaviors and risks planned for the coming year. There is no explicit requirement that the notice at enrollment be provided 14 days prior to the start of instruction. However, if the comprehensive sexual health education or HIV prevention education is arranged after the beginning of the school year, the notice to parents shall be made by mail or another commonly used method of notification, no fewer than 14 days before the instruction is delivered. The language only requires the 14 day notice if the instruction is arranged after the beginning of the school year. So with that, it's recommended that the Board of Education approve the first reading of the proposed draft and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, so do my colleagues have any questions? No questions. Okay, so and are there any comments from the public on this, Dr. Naguchi?
There are, there are. There are, there are no comments.
Okay. So I have one, um, so are there any comments? So we go back to the comments.
There are no comments.
No comments from that. Okay, Mr. Walker.
So, explain this to me again, because we're saying you have to notify a parent 14 days if you change something after the beginning of the year, but if you don't change something after the beginning of the year, so long as they get something in the email or a telephone call, we're good to go.
Yes, if the district is going to bring in, or the school is going to bring in a special speaker, or change the method of their instruction anytime during the school year, that's when they're required to notify parents 14 days in advance of that change.
But you don't have to notify the parent that you're going to be teaching HIV, sexuals, da, 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 da?
No, we do provide notification at the start of the school year, and that's what we're saying, at the start of the school year, you provide notification.
Correct. If somebody comes in midstream.
And then if you bring in a speaker later in the school year, that's when you're required to provide a 14-day notification.
The question at the last board meeting was a student coming in and not being notified, or not, that was the original sort of crux of why we pushed this. It wasn't about a speaker, it was about parental notification of sex ed, blah, 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 blah.
Yes, so the legal counsel said that when a student enrolls after the start of the school year, we're required to inform that student at the time of their enrollment. And that's done via the information handbook, and the information provided in the information handbook.
All right, so, good luck to the parent in the 125-page manual. I think that deals with a legal question. I don't think it's going to answer my concerns or Trustee Mars' concerns, but I'll leave it at that because it's not worth getting into that far in the weeds, but I think we're skimming on the agenda.
Okay, so here's my comment is, I appreciate, thank you for getting legal counsel, and I read through, uh, what legal counsel said. And so my concern is that this was the minimum that we're required to do. That doesn't mean that we cannot add and ask for a 14-day notification, um, for our parents before we teach this at a school site. I believe that in the time that we're living in right now and all of the changes to sex education curriculum, that the more we communicate with the parents, the better that we will be and the more trust we will gain. So I would ask that we could add 14 days on this and make it the same as the speaker. When there's a guest speaker or a change, that they would be notified that on this item right here on H, um, E 5145.6H, it's at the top of the page. So this was my request, and so I wanted to find out if there was any support for that. And if there isn't, I would like to vote on this item and pull it out and vote separately on it. So I agree with the entire parent notification with all of the other items. This is the only one that I would ask that we could have, um, some extra communication to the parents because it's such a sensitive issue.
Can I make a clarification before you move?
Oh, yes.
So you'll remember that in the board communication that was shared, um, last week, that there were two sample letters in there. One was for, um, seven, eight students. And I clarified, um, with a teacher earlier this morning that said that that letter is sent out, so for, in our junior high schools, uh, sexual health education is only provided in the eighth grade year and only in the second half of the eighth grade year. So at the start of the second half of the school year, parents receive that letter, informing them that their student will receive that instruction in that part of the school year. And then in addition, in our high schools, it's only our ninth graders, or typically our ninth graders, that take health education where the sexual health education is provided. So it's mostly only in that school year that our high school students receive that education, and they receive notification of that in the information handbook, as well as a sample letter that I included from Modesto High, a sample letter of the letter that parents receive when their students are in that class.
Yes, those were really helpful, and I appreciate that you put those in because those did help clarify what the parents see at home. I see Mr. Walker has a comment and Ms. Newman has a comment. So go ahead, Mr. Walker, and then we'll have Ms. Newman.
I think that answers the question I asked at the last board meeting. Because what I was asking them was, when I asked about this subject last year, it was my understanding that we were sending out letters in the second half of the year to allow parents to understand what was going on, which more or less addressed the concerns that you brought up, President Marks, and are very similar at the high school. And so that was the question that we didn't have an answer to last time. That, what you just said, Ms. Fortuna, aligned with what I had been told. I think the question now becomes, do you put that in the board policy so that it continues? And then, and then here would be my premise for why I would want to do that, not because of what we're doing right now. I've reviewed our sex ed material, and I don't think we're anywhere near out of bounds like a lot of districts are. But if you put this back in K through six, or you adopt something that goes over the fence, then I think this becomes much more important, which is why I think putting into the board policy what we're currently doing makes a lot of sense and would meet halfway to where Trustee Marks and I am sort of sitting and just saying, let's keep doing what we're doing and make it part of the policy so it doesn't disappear. And if and when they adopt something else in a different board, we've now covered that issue, because this gets out of bounds very quickly, and that's it for me.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Walker. Trustee Newman?
Okay. I, I don't have a problem with what the policy says. However, my, my issue is that the policy says one thing, and we do what the policy says, and then we go on above and beyond. So we're not doing what the policy says. So, um, we're, we're adhering to the policy, but we're doing more. So I don't, that's what bothers me about this whole board policy, is, well, does it reflect what we're doing? I mean, this is the minimum standard, but does this reflect what we're doing? I don't really understand the purpose of this board policy. And, and so if, if what we're doing is more than what this policy says, then why have a policy that says we don't, we're only doing the minimum? Really what we're doing is more. So I'm, I'm having trouble with why we're, why we're doing this policy in and of itself, because I think this is one instance, and when I, when I go through this as a parent, who knows, I read through that, that, any, any notice I get, and also through the, um, the handbook that I get. So what I know is we're doing more than this sometimes in many of these different areas, but then this policy is saying one thing. So do we have to have this policy enacted, or can we just keep doing what we're doing, which is we're, we're, we'll adhere to the law and the minimum, but then, you know, as we're, we're doing more in certain instances than is required? I, and, and I, and that probably goes above Ms. Fortuna's, where, where she's ready to go at this point, but, um, that's, that's my trouble with this whole policy. And, and you've just pointed out what the inherent flaw is it. And so I'm not, I'm not sure what to do with this.
So, yes, Trustee Walker?
I think to answer Trustee Newman's question, the reason for the policy is that we have state mandates that require us to inform parents. And why it was number one on my list four years ago to pass this policy was that parents are then aware of what their rights are, that you are being notified. You know, how many times have I talked to parents in parking lots that have absolutely zero comprehension that they don't have to take any statewide test, because they were never notified, or they were notified and it was an 150-page manual that they didn't read? And I don't think that comes up to this level. And I, and as, again, as I said the last time, I don't think what we're doing right now with sex ed, HIV, is out of bounds. What I do believe is that there will be an effort in the future to go out of bounds. And if that is the case, then we really need to allow parents to be informed so that we don't end up in a place where another board has a line of parents going absolutely ballistic because they weren't told what a student was being presented in a classroom that wasn't age appropriate. I think this policy protects a future board, and is a good idea to allow parents to be informed about something that is likely to set off huge fireworks. I don't think a parent's going to come in and go nuts at a board meeting or go crazy on a site principal because they didn't know about an opt-out clause on the S-Back test. If you're sitting in a classroom doing sex ed that goes out of bounds with a seven or eight or nine-year-old, mom and dad are going to go goofy, as they should. And so I think there's value in being proactive and informing parents of something you would want to be informed of as a parent that is likely to set off nerves. But the overarching reason the policy is required to inform parents, you're required to inform parents of when you put pesticides on school sites, when you, da, 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 da. That's why the exhibit is 10 times longer than the actual policy. And I think that it's worth informing parents in this area because there's nowhere that's going to get us in a future board in more trouble than finding out something got introduced, an outside speaker, material that was out of bounds, which is extraordinarily likely if you go look at what other districts are doing, and many of them are right around us doing this. And we have not done that, but I think it's safety first.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any other hands up. So here's my suggestion for a motion for this item only, is to approve this item with the, um, these suggestions, is to add to it, and 14 days prior to teaching this subject. So that's just added at when to notify, so we keep beginning of each school year for students in grades seven through 12, or at a time of enrollment if after beginning of school year, and 14 days prior to teaching this subject, so that parents have an opportunity to, um, if they missed it in the huge stack of information that was sent out to them, then they have another option. So that's my motion, and I see two comments or hands raised. So, um, I didn't see which one came up first. So maybe it was Trustee West. So Trustee West?
I'm not opposed to adding something to the policy that we have. Um, I listened to Trustee Walker's views, um, and that sounds reasonable to me. However, uh, Ms. Fortuna said that we already do send out letters within that semester. And so I think if we put in within 14 days, I think that's going to kind of muddy things up. Can we change the language so that, um, we, we are giving them letters closer to the time, but taking out that 14 days, to me, that's very, um, limiting.
So would you like it within, um, a month, or 30 days?
Um, Becky, what is it? What, what is the policy now? You said within the, within that semester?
There isn't a, a policy saying within the semester. I know for certain that are seven to eight, or, or for eighth graders, it's, it's saying that, yes, at the start of the semester, that's when they, they send out that letter. Um, the high school, I'm not as clear on.
Uh, this is Associate Superintendent. At the start of the semester for both of those grade levels, and would that, would that satisfy you?
All right, well, let me hear what Mr. Gudoe, um, says. He, I see his hand now, it's on the bottom of the screen. Okay, Mr. Gudoe?
Yes, thank you. Uh, I can speak for the high school and say that what, those notices are sent out at the beginning of each semester, at the start of the health course. Um, and the reason why I would suggest, I, that I'm a little wary around a timeframe is because there are those, those presentations, and some of that information is actually scheduled out over the course of the semester. So depending on which teacher you have and which period, uh, that presentation may be given would determine when that letter would need to be sent. So, um, that's been a practice for at least the last seven or eight years that I can recall, that those, those notification letters regarding, uh, sexual health education are sent at the beginning of each semester to every student enrolled in a health class.
Okay, so could it be at the beginning of the quarter? Is the quarter, um, if they're teaching it, I know they're only doing it for a, a few, like a couple of weeks?
So at, 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 in eighth grade, in eighth grade, that instruction typically takes place towards the end of the school year. Um, but again, it kind of goes back to when it, when is, uh, when are the services or the, the, the people that we bring in able to do that? Um, as, and in high school, again, it's, it's a semester-length class. So if you said quarterly, um, keeping track of students in the health class that have already received the presentation, I think that would create confusion.
Okay, so that makes sense. I, I, I would agree to the, to say at the beginning, instead of the 14 days prior, to put it at the beginning of the quarter, at the, the semester, at the beginning of the semester. So that would work. Okay, that sounds good. Trustee Newman?
I, I just want to concur with Trustee West and where the discussion is going. I think this clears up my issue with it, which is the policy says one thing, and then we do something else, which I don't like that, when we know we're creating a policy that doesn't adhere to what we're doing. Um, that's troublesome. So, um, I think that the, the semester works. And then I have a question for, for Mr. Gudoe. Are, um, junior highs are on semester system, or are they, are they on trimester?
They're on semester.
Semester, okay, because at one point we, we were. Um, so, uh, that, that should work, semester language should work for both then.
Yes. Okay, that sounds good. Um, I will, and thankfully, there's a letter. I, I like the letter idea because I think that sometimes that stands out when you receive information from the school. So are, so do we need, we can vote on this? I, oh, Trustee Brown has a comment, I see.
No, I was just going to make a motion that we alter the language to address this issue at the beginning of any semester where this material is presented.
Okay. All right.
I, I'll second.
Okay, Trustee West seconded. Okay, so, so that will add beginning of semester. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
I have a question.
Oh, you have a question? Whoops, before we vote. Okay, Trustee Lopez, I didn't see your little.
Yeah, I put it at the last moment. Is that going to be this, because I know that we're focusing, everyone that said something is about, um, the health, health ed class. What about, uh, what about, um, presenters, speakers? Because that might change, because that might change within the semester, right?
Right, so that one's already, um, that one's.
That's already addressed.
It's already addressed on, on page Q on this document, so I'll read it to you.
No, it's good, I, if it's there, I'll, I'll find it.
Yeah, because it, it just says that, um, and it's towards the bottom of the page.
Because initially, you were speaking about speakers as well, so I was confused on.
Yeah, because I, because I brought that one up on the last one, because I was trying to align it with the one on HIV, um, speakers, HIV prevention or sexual health, and it's at the bottom of the Q page. So that one said at least 14 days because there's a change if there's a guest speaker, so that the parents have opportunity to hear that. Okay, so now we will vote on that. So we'll go back to the motion, and the second was mo- motion by Trustee West, seconded by Trustee Walker. Um, was I correct on that? No.
I didn't get in quick enough.
I didn't catch.
I think Trustee Brown, um, made the motion, and I think there were a couple of us that seconded.
Yes, okay, so Trustee Brown and Trustee West, we'll go ahead, that's what I said before. So we'll stick with Trustee Brown, Trustee West. All those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 And then we need to hear from Mr. Irvin. Mr. Irvin?
Aye, aye.
Okay, Mr. Irvin says aye. Mr. Lopez, did you vote? Did you, and then, are there any dissensions? Any no votes? Okay, no, no votes, and the motion passes unanimously to keep that. Now to vote on the actual item, the whole entire, um, draft of this, item E 5145.6, we're going to vote on parent notification. So do I have a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Been moved by Trustee Walker, seconded by, do I have a second? I'll second it. Oh, okay, Trustee Newman. Okay, Trustee Newman seconds it to approve this, uh, document on parent notification. All those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it looks like, are there any dissensions? No, no votes, okay. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Fortuna, for being patient with us through this.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, it was a lot later than we expected. Okay, so now we will move on to items to be placed on future Board of Agenda. So I had someone ask me about doing, uh, information on our budget. It's a teacher in our district, and so I spoke with our, our superintendent, and we are planning to have our, um, budget. to have our um budget item on our agenda either on June 8th or June 22nd. It will probably take almost the entire time. And instead of having a workshop, we will have that discussion at that time. We'll have a lot of time to be able to ask our questions and then also inform the public as to where we are going with our budget in this future, um, the future changes that we have. So I just wanted to let you know that. And do we have any other items to be placed on future Board agendas? We do not see any. I see all shaking heads. Okay, then, do I have a motion to close the meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Trustee Walker, seconded by Trustee Brown. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you all. Thank you for this meeting and all your patience. I appreciate it. Take care. Bye-bye.